Call the Old Town in Prescott Valley, regular council meeting, October 10th, 2019. Welcome, everyone. It doesn't show in my notes who will be doing the invocation tonight. Sir?
Let's pray. Almighty God and loving Heavenly Father, we're grateful to address you at the beginning of this council meeting. We acknowledge your word which says, "This is the day the Lord has made; therefore we will rejoice and be glad in it." We also acknowledge your word which says, "Let everything be subject to the governing authorities; for there is no authority except that which God has established." Furthermore, we acknowledge your statement, "Man makes his plans, but each step is ordered by the Lord." Heavenly Father, we thank you for your guidance and for giving us wisdom as we make the decisions that are before us this evening. We intercede on behalf of those who lead us, and we thank you for them. We also thank you for the employees and volunteers of our town. We're grateful for the teamwork through which we accomplish what we do. As we approach the holiday season, we thank you for the joy the holidays represent. We ask for grace and mercy on those whose circumstances are such that joy is distant from them. May we continue to grow in our commitment to serve and strengthen one another. As your word says, may these words of my mouth and this meditation of my heart be pleasing in your sight, Lord, my rock and my redeemer. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Will you all please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Kelpal Gudah?
Present.
Vice Mayor Lauralina?
I'm here.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Gressman? Councilmember Kendall Schumacher?
Present.
Councilmember Don Packard?
Present.
Councilmember Lori Hunt?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna move right on to item five now. Scheduled announcements, we'll start off with library district presentation. Come on up, folks.
Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Welcome.
Counsel, thank you for having us here tonight. You know, the county staff and the Prescott Valley staff all work very well together throughout the year, and they do a lot of great things, and that's what tonight is all about, to bring to some attention of some of the great work that goes between the county and the Town in Prescott Valley. So at this time, I'd like to introduce to you Cory, and he has a PowerPoint to share with you and some other great information. So again, thank you very much, and here we go.
Welcome, Cory.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, it's a privilege to be here in front of you today and to tell you a little bit about what the library district does for the Town in Prescott Valley. So first of all, I'd like to tell you a little bit about what the library district is, how it was established, what its purpose is. So back in 1987, the legislature allowed counties to establish library districts, which become a separate taxing subdivision of the state of Arizona. So at that time, about six months a year later, the Board of Supervisors created the library district, and as such, they become the de facto Board of Directors for the library district. So they kind of get to wear two hats where the library district is concerned. One is Board of Directors of the Library District and also as Board of Supervisors for the county. So also within that statute, public libraries could become, municipal public libraries and other libraries, could, public libraries could become affiliates of the library district. So in order to do this, all they had to do was apply. They had to say, "We want to be an affiliate." They had to put a notice in the paper, and then bam, they're an affiliate. There's not even an approval process. So as long as they're a public library, they can be an affiliate of the library district. And as I mentioned before, we're a political taxing subdivision of the state of Arizona. It also means we get to levy our own property tax. So right now, we collect $16.51 per hundred thousand dollars of the value your house goes to the library district. So it's important that we give some of that money back, not only in services, but also in a direct contribution to our municipal public libraries, including the Town of Prescott Valley. So also as part of the library district, we run several of our own libraries, 15 branch libraries we run directly in some of our smaller communities, and we also do other services as well. So it's important we have a vision for what we need to do to properly serve the people of the county. We do that through core values of service, professionalism, responsibility, and leadership. And our mission is to provide library materials and services to meet the informational, cultural, and recreational needs of all residents of Yavapai County through our branch libraries, our affiliates, and the Yavapai Library Network. So we serve the public in three main ways. First and foremost, and I put this ahead of everything else, because the Yavapai Library Network is probably the most visible part of what the library district does. It serves 43 libraries throughout the entire county, and there's no other network like it in existence in this state. It's unique to this county. So we have academic libraries, we have public libraries, K-12 libraries, Charlotte Hall Museum, special libraries, all working together to provide world-class, cost-effective service to the people of Yavapai County. So currently, as I mentioned, there's 43 members that are part of it, 21 governing authorities, and we provide things like the online catalog. So if you go to catalog.yln.info, you select Prescott Valley Public Library, you can place an item on hold and come get it here the next day because the great library staff that is under the auspices of Casey will get that ready for you. Also, another thing we do is share items between all those libraries, which is 300,000 items a year that get transferred between libraries. And this not only provides excellent service, but it also is extremely cost-effective, because that's 300,000 items none of our libraries had to buy on their own because they could get it from one of the other libraries. And you can also drop your books off at any library. So I would always take all my books that I checked out, give them to my kids, and have them return them at their school library because, you know, that way they can do it and I don't have to. We also provide direct services to Yavapai County residents. So we have 15 branch libraries, as I mentioned, in municipal and unincorporated, rural and unincorporated areas. So we do operate two municipal libraries via contract, which is Clarkdale and the Dewey-Humboldt Library. We also provide books, ultra-high-definition movies, video games, audiobooks, e-materials that all go out for circulation throughout the entire county. We also provide direct support for the municipal libraries. We do this through providing a product called Overdrive, which is where you can get eBooks and e-audiobooks from, and there's about 15,000 items in that collection that all the library, public libraries purchase together, but we pay for the platform. We provide a courier service, which we do get reimbursed for through the people that utilize that service. We provide representation at a state level, since I'm also the county librarian, I have, I'm by statute required to go to meetings at a state level and represent the interests of the libraries in the county. And we give $1.8 million in direct funding to our municipal libraries, of which $349,184.51 goes to the Prescott Valley Public Library. So as I mentioned, there's $1.8 million in total that we're giving away, 1.675 goes to the affiliates. This is money we use to directly support libraries. So how do we decide how that money is spent? We use a quasi-performance-based formula for that. So any library off the bat is gonna get 5% of the total of that portion based on a fixed amount. So they're each gonna get the same amount of money for that 5%. Part of it's based on population for the next 5%, and 50% is based on assessed valuation. It's intentional that that much of the formula is weighted that way because that's how we're receiving our funding. So if the residents of Prescott Valley are paying in via property tax to the library district, they deserve to see a proportionate amount of that money back. Also, circulation is a performance-based part of that formula, so libraries can directly impact how much money they're getting simply by increasing usage of the library, and that's intentional too, because if your library is getting more use, you deserve more funds to support your library, which is why active patrons are a part of that too, and items, because those items are going all around the county. So how does that shake out, each different piece for Prescott Valley? The first part is the standard amount, which, as I mentioned, every municipal library is gonna get $9,300 for that. Population, 26% of that piece of that particular pie goes to Prescott Valley, which is $22,000, and $173,000 because of assessed valuation goes to Prescott Valley. Circulation, 71%, which is 21% of the total, and 26.5% due to active patrons, 17% due to number of items. So all that comes together to give your grant. So this is the trend on how that amount of money's been impacted over the last four years. You can see every year that's been going up, and the reason is, your usage is going up, assessed valuation is going up, there's more building happening. All of that is increasing the amount of money that you get on an annual basis. So if I got my, oh wow, deleted part of it, that's fantastic, but the, the portion up there that says category, name, value, percentage should be 300, about $350,000, and that should be about 18% of the total of your library's budget. So that's our contribution to help the Town of Prescott Valley provide superior library service, which I know they do. That's my contact information if you have any questions for me later on, but with that, I'd like to give your esteemed director of the Town of Prescott Valley a big, huge fake check for $349,000. They've already received, well, you will be receiving half, but we actually provide the money in two payments each year. The first payment is coming soon after we collect property tax. Casey's gonna take the money this night.
Thank you.
Great job, Cory, thank you.
Thank you. And you know, again, I just want to say that everything we do as a county and as a town is through partnerships. We are not able to accomplish the things that we do by ourselves, and that's what being united and bringing together a better working environment for the community at large is what we should all be concentrating on. So I hope this has helped. We know it's a celebration of libraries, so we appreciate Prescott Valley and all that you do for the citizens. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item B, service recognition for Larry Martin, Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much.
I like the tie.
I'm flabbergasted, I don't know what to say. Nah, I got something to say. As some of you know, I've enjoyed so much working on the library board, working in the library, but actually, it's not working. It's been a lot of fun, and when things are fun, are fun, they're not really work. So, and I thank the board so much for supporting.
Much better.
See, I couldn't have done anything without Casey. I needed her. And by the way, do I get anything out of this, a couple bucks, maybe a check or something? Oh, alright. That, where was I? Well, I was saying, "Thank you very much," and I do thank you. I thank the council just about every time I've been up here because it's, you've all been such a great support. And the staff is going, and Casey is just moving this library along. This isn't my swan song because I'm still volunteering at the library, so I'll hang around for a while. Again, thank you very much for the record.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, item C, Chamber of Commerce, I believe the legend Brady Cabral's in the audience.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. So I am here tonight to recognize the growth in the business community in Prescott Valley. We are always growing, we're growing faster than I even know what to do with. The chamber is incredibly busy, but tonight, we just want to recognize we have a brand-new taxi service in Prescott Valley, so I've brought up the manager Eric Padnik with Grab-A-Cab Taxi Service to introduce himself.
Hi, as you, as you said, I'm Eric Padnik, I'm the general manager of Grab-A-Cab Taxi Service. We're located here locally in Prescott Valley, we do serve the Quad Cities areas. Anyway, we, our phone number is 928-899-9294, and I'd also like to say that we do senior discounts, we do veterans discounts because we are veteran-owned and operated. The owner is a veteran, and I myself am a veteran, and we also do early recovery and recovery discounts for people that are in active recovery program, so they can get to-and-from work. We also offer work rates for the working class, get them to-and-from work cheaply so they can save a lot of their paycheck. So I think I've covered all the points and...
Can you say your phone number again?
My phone number is 899-9294, area code 928, and you can also get ahold of us on the web at grabacabaz.com.
Great, so thank you, welcome.
Thank you, glad to be part of the community.
Thank you.
Alright, and we also have to introduce, this is not a new organization, but the Humboldt Education Foundation has recently become a chamber member, so we wanted to show them off tonight. So we have Kelly Lee, Guy Rogginson, and Lori Hunt of the Humboldt Education Foundation Board of Directors.
Wonderful.
Thank you. This is my other hat. So I put before you an invitation to our Teacher of the Year event, which is March 24th, 2020, at the Prescott Resort, and we hope all of you will come. We're very excited, last year, we raised close to $20,000. $20,000, which was the most ever, and we were able to spend $6,000 of that on teacher grants, which we are awarding in the next week or two, some really exciting thing. The sad part is, we were only able to award $2,000 of that for three different quarters, and the request came in at $15,000. So we need to make a lot of extra money at this event so that we can give more grants next year. And then I also put our infographic on there, which talks about our Hungry Kids Program, which sends weekend backpacks home with food for kids that don't have food on the weekend. And it also has our mission, which is, Hef provides community support for excellence in education and contributes to the educational experiences that impact the lives of the Humboldt Unified School District students. We also have an orchestra program which we're doing, which is brand-new, and it's in three different of the schools, three schools now, four schools now, and it's pretty amazing. They are, the kids are learning all kinds of string instruments, and they're doing really well, so we're very excited about that, and I just want to say that we're excited to be chamber members.
We're very excited. How would somebody register for that event?
So you would register at humboldteducationfoundation.org, and that's on the back, and we have a series of sponsors on here. So we also have a brand-new website, so if you haven't visited that website yet, do that, it's on the opposite side of the card, and I would like to invite everybody in the audience to pick up one of our cards and one of our infographics, and if you could pass it out to anybody that would be willing to be a sponsor, we would greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it with the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Moving on, item D, Prescott Valley Police Department Employee Introductions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council staff. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce some of our newer employees. I am always amazed at the quality of people that we're able to attract to the department. I also don't necessarily want to wait five years to introduce them to you when they get their five-year recognition. You know, when we speak to the people who come and apply with us, or maybe after they get hired and we ask them why they come here, it's because of the quality of people that we have, it's because of men like the officers that are standing in the cornerback here, like these people in front of you, and the reputation that they have built for our department. So that's why we wanted to start doing this, and that's why these wonderful people are standing behind me tonight. So I'm gonna start with Michaela. Michaela Gill was born in Sydney, and this is her humor, not mine, yes, down under South Dakota in Nebraska, not Australia. She moved to Denver in 1967 and was raised by two great parents who taught her integrity and respect. She's a hard worker, eager to learn new things, never afraid to step out of her comfort zone. An entrepreneur, she was in the top 3% of Mary Kay and owned her own bicycle shop. Her law enforcement background comes from her father being a deputy sheriff for 20 years, her brother serves as a deputy sheriff, sister-in-law is a detective, grandfather was in State Patrol, and she has a cousin who is Secret Service to President Reagan. Michaela has received several awards in past employment, including Outstanding Special Project in Colorado State Parks and Employee of the Year. She's given her communities much as a volunteer, as well for the Colorado Humane Society as a dispatcher, and volunteered before coming to us over 400 hours from 2016 to 2018 for our family violence unit. So she worked with us for two years before she started to get paid, thank you for that. Michaela is very happy working at the police department in such a strong family and team environment. Michaela Gill. Kim lives in Prescott Valley with her husband Peter. They are new to this area, moving here two years ago from the East Coast. She works with us as an administrative assistant, helping manage federal, state, and local grants. Kim previously worked as a postal carrier for the US Post Office, taught elementary school and special education students, and more currently worked as the Executive Director of a Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. Her best job ever was being a mom to three wonderful children. In her spare time, she enjoys bike riding, hiking, sewing, reading, and cooking. One of her most exciting adventures was biking across the northern tier of the United States with a group of 10 bicyclists nine years ago. She collected many stories, new friends, and lots of beautiful memories. Amy Stone. So you may have seen Amy's face before, we stole her from Public Works. I think she voluntarily came over. So Amy grew up in Chicago, she moved to Prescott Valley when she was 14 with her father. She met her significant other in high school, and they reunited years after graduation. She has two little girls that are her life, Hayden, who is six, and Maddie, who is two. She started with the town three and a half years ago in the Public Works Department, where she worked for two years. She then took a promotional opportunity at the police department in April of 2018. She orders and coordinates new vehicle builds for the police department and handles payroll, among other things, a lot of other things. Amy loves her job and the atmosphere at the police department. Last, but certainly not least, Cody Skaberick. Cody was born and raised in Arizona, he has four sisters and one brother. He went to Willow Canyon High School in Surprise, where he played football, baseball, wrestled, and rode bulls. Busy. He was the Football Player of the Year in 2009 for his district, he's an avid out- He's an avid outdoorsman who likes to hunt, fish, and camp with his family. While growing up seeing his family members in the military and law enforcement, he always wanted to follow in their footsteps. So while in high school, he attended the Surprise Police Department Teen Academy. That is where he knew he wanted to become a police officer. It has been a lo, long road to where he is today. While riding bulls, he met his wife, Kami, and they've been married since November of 2013. Were you waving at her from the...[628.16][628.16](LAUGHING). They have three kids, two girls and one boy, Bryley, age five, Paisley is three, and Cody, one-year-old. His wife is a self-employed hairstylist. Cody Skaberick.[642.32][642.32](APPLAUSE).
Speech, speech.
Well, they're, I can tell you, they're not shy. I'm, I'm very proud of, of all of our employees, but especially our new employees. So again, thank you for the opportunity to introduce them to you tonight.
Thanks.[660.82][660.82](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I love the pink patches. Thank you for wearing those.
All right, moving on, item six, Council Comments. We can start with Councilman Packer this time. Change it up.
Good for you.
Councilman Schumacher.
I'd just like to say that I learn something new every week that I get the chance to be here, and I'm excited to have been able to meet our county librarian. And it's just an amazing thing to get to be surrounded by the most wonderful people in our town.
Nothing. The only thing I have is I won't be at work-study next week because I'll be at the Transit Summit.
And actually, we don't have a work-study.
There is no work-study then, next week then.
So we won't miss you.
So no one's going to miss me. So, perfect.[737.13][737.13](LAUGHING). That's it. Vice Mayor.
So I'm the newbie here, and I've had a great time being through orientation. And yesterday, I got to take a tour of the sewage treatment plant, which was great. And I just would like to let the community know that we give those tours. If you're interested, it's actually not that bad, and it's quite interesting. I learned all about microorganism, organisms. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Yes. And then, secondly, I heard from our council member right here, Marty, that's absent, and his surgery went great. So he'll be back soon.
Great. All right, moving on, item seven, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Council, we've all had a chance to review. If there's an item you'd like to remove, please speak up. Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
For a second? Yes, thank you. I get to vote tonight.
Oh, I'm in. Ooh, I don't. Well, there it is. Cool. You're not in?
Yay.
I thought I was. I'm going to have to voice vote.
Vice Mayor Laurel and I?
Yes.
And that passes, Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item eight, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 867 by Title Only, amending Article 10-02 of the Town Code. Clerk, will you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Amendment to Article 10-2 Town Property, declared by Resolution Number 2107 to be a public record, which amends Article 10-2 in Chapter 10, offenses and town code of the Town of Prescott Valley to provide general rules relating to pickable court areas of town parks and reorganize and simplify all existing rules relating to recreation areas and parks, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code, not hearing repealed, reenacted, or amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thanks, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
Okay.
I have nothing, ma'am.
Give me one second.
I'll, I'll second the Vice Mayor's motion.
Just, yes, sir.
Oh, yes. Oh, sorry, yes. Are we all supposed to say yes?
No, we're voting.
Oh.
Just those of us of our computer.
There we go.
So Vice Mayor said yes. Mayor Kelpaguda? Okay. It passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, for new business, consideration of appointing Scott Byram to the Parks and Rec Commission. Who do we have for that?
Me.
It's all yours, ma'am.
Come on up. One position on the Parks and Recreation Commission became open when Pat Fowler resigned at the end of his term ending June 30th, 2019. He was first appointed to this commission on August 22nd, 2013, to fill an existing term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2016. He served two consecutive terms with the last term ending June 30th, 2019. Myself, Councilman Anderson, and Councilman Grossman conducted interviews with three applicants for the Parks and Recreation Commission. They are recommending the appointment of Scott Byram to fill the vacancy made by the departure of Pat with a term renewal date of June 30th, 2022. Now, before we go to seconds and voting, why don't you pull that microphone over and share a little bit about why you wanted to serve on this commission?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, members of the public, it's certainly a lot different being up here under the microphone than being down there. I'm kind of happy most people left, so I make a fool out of myself. I'll just be under, you know, a little less circumstances. But I'm, I recently came from California.
It's okay.
It's okay. Okay, cool. I'm one of those.
You survived that with us.
Yeah. And I started a family, purchased a house in Prescott Valley. So a lot of, a lot of big things happened for me in 2019. And I wanted to develop roots, the foundation of growing a family. And I thought, you know, what, what better way than to do that than to give back and to be here in front of you fine people and to give my two cents as far as what could be done in terms of the Parks and Rec Department. I'd like to give a voice to the young people, if there's any watching or... Yeah, okay. So it just, it seems to be a little misrepresented. And I think the Parks and Rec Department is a natural fit for me, just personally, to, to be passionate about and motivated about, to see positive change. So that's a little bit about why I chose it.
That was perfect. And now, those that are here and those that are watching at home, now they know why, in part, we selected you. And Rick, since I can't make a motion or second, would you, please?
Yes. Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Motion to appoint Scott Byram to the Parks and Recreation Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2022 by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor and I?
That's a big yes.
And that passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Scott, thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Mr. Parker, moving on to item B. We'll be discussing zoning map change, ZMC 19-008, Cavan Opportunity Fund LLC. At this time, we're going to be opening up public hearing.
Mayor, I'd like to just give you a brief overview, and then, yes, this is the portion for the public hearing. And after my introduction, I would respond to any questions that you may have or members from the public. Also, in the audience tonight is Gary Burton, representing Cavan Opportunity Fund, as well as his land planner. On the slide above, he has an illustration of a 25-acre parcel, which was annexed in 2003, and is the site of a 200,000-square-foot commercial complex, which was approved in 2007. Obviously, it's currently vacant. The property is traversed via Donovan Lane, which is historic access to the north, and is proposed now for multiple-family apartments in the configuration of single-family, standalone, single-story, similar-to-a-house, and duplex, duplex configurations. This shows a little bit of the area's zoning and its relationship to the town's general plan. The proposed commercial uses, as well as density housing, are contemplated in this area or tier of development in the town's general plan 2025, and was also congruent to the recommendations of general plan 2020 when this property was rezoned. This is an illustration of the preliminary development plan, which was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, configuring 197 units on 19 of the 25 acres. There remains commercial pads, which would comprise approximately 46,000 square feet on a total of six acres remaining commercially zoned. One key component here, you'll see the area kind of in the chocolate on the corner. That area is intended to become a future lift station and may also include commercial uses in the future, depending upon configuration of utilities. One key aspect to this also is the intersection with Highway 169. That intersection will correspond to an intersection across the highway, which will go into Dewey-Humboldt. This is the originally approved preliminary development plan for the total of 200,000 square feet on the 25 acres. You can see a little outpiece right along Highway 69 that's separately owned and is also commercially zoned and has been developed historically with commercial uses. These are some preliminary elevations that were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, showing the configurations of the single-family residential unit, front and back, as well as the duplex configuration. Once again, these will be rental units, and this is a illustration also of products that they have successfully completed elsewhere and are proposed in this location. This matter came before the Planning and Zoning Commission last month. They reviewed the materials that were presented. They heard from the public. There's also a summary of the neighborhood meeting discussion that took place. Several of the stipulations recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission on this matter regard traffic communication to the north. There were a number of property owners who expressed concern about how those trips could occur conveniently because of the agricultural nature of the properties to the north. And those discussions are ongoing. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to see a conclusion to those discussions, so they've recommended that they review, they being the Planning and Zoning Commission, the final development plan before it comes forward to the Town Council. The roadway communication at this intersection is a topic of significant concern because of the left-turning movements coming off of 69 to 169. And although there were two bays turning left off of 69 at this location, the light doesn't clear the backup of traffic. So a rather extensive traffic study was performed, submitted to ADOT as well as to our staff, which talks about how traffic will ultimately be conveyed through the intersection. ADOT informs us that they would like to, at a future date, create a large roundabout at that intersection, eliminating the traffic light. I believe it is in their five-year plan. Also, there has been discussion with neighbors about how best to access properties to the north. At some point in the future, Village Way, which would be the name of the road that goes all the way up to Bradshaw Mountain Road, will be constructed and will be also the location for future public utilities to end, including a pressure sewer line. With that, I've given you a general overview. Mayor, at your direction, I'd respond to your questions, and certainly after comments from the public. I would attempt to respond to those from the public as well.
Thank you. Council, questions for Mr. Parker?
I do have one. When you're saying the roundabout, would that be on 69 at Bradshaw?
It would be, the roundabouts proposed of 169 and 69. That would be an ADOT improvement. When that roundabout is constructed, it was explained that Donovan Lane, because of its near proximity to the highway, will be closed, and it would be closed by ADOT. The Town of Prescott Valley doesn't administer ADOT right of way.
Okay.
Mr. Parker, when we originally, as a town, annexed the property and zoned it in, it was zoned Residential 1? Did I read that correctly? And then went Commercial? Now it's going back?
It was zoned R1L, excuse me, it was originally zoned RCU 2A, which is a county designation. When the town annexes a property, we have to cover it with the same or the most closely analogous use district. In this town, it's R1L70.
Okay.
So we went from R1L70 in 2006 to C2PAD. And now the proposal is to take a portion of that commercially-zoned property and create an RS, which would permit multiple-family. One key aspect to this, and you've noticed this is a trend for quite some time, Mr. Mayor, is because we're taking productive commercial out of production, in order to replace some of the revenue that we would likely get from sales tax, they're expected to have a surcharge applied to the rents on these units. And we've been consistent for the last several years in imposing that stipulation, especially when we're taking commercial zoning away and replacing with multiple-family.
Sure. And I think along the lines with the, the rents and how we have, we constantly hear the battle between the price of rents and the price of, cost of living here. Does Cavan, and maybe Cavan can reach to that, in regards to any bonuses given to first responders and teachers with a goal of keeping those qualified people here in our town?
I think that's a very valid point. I would believe that at some point in time, because of the volumes of multiple-family that are slated to come forward in the next year or so, that hopefully the market will have an impact as well on those costs. I was taken back recently at a grand opening when I was informed that the base rent for a 900-square-foot apartment was over $1,000. I was a little taken back. I really wish I wouldn't have gotten rid of my apartment complexes years ago. But with that, I would turn it over to, to the Cavan representatives, or again, Mayor, respond to questions. I'll hang out here if there are questions from the public.
Great, thank you. Representative for Cavan? Welcome, sir. Oh, two of you.
Good evening.
It's allowed.[1753.76][1753.76](LAUGHING).
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name's Gary Burton. I'm the manager for the Cavan Opportunity Fund, the owner of the project, and the applicant for the requested zoning change.
Great, sir. Reference my previous question. Can you maybe go into a little detail on that? Has Cavan in the past offered those opportunities for specific occupations, whatever projects they've done before?
Well, we haven't developed these properties with, you know, discounted or affordable rent concessions, per se. They're generally... They're general development. We have ranges on our one, two, and three-bedroom rental rates typically driven by market rates in the community. But we certainly offer all the units to the public generally and certainly encourage members of the community that are, you know, here and present and try and, you know, be the best member of the community that we can be and believe very strongly in giving back to the communities in which we're present.
And that's great, and I appreciate hearing that. I just, when you hear market rate and apartments and Prescott, Prescott Valley, we're truly just marketing out our teachers, where we're losing teachers every single year, you know, 5%, 10% because we're not treating them like the professionals they should be, and we're expecting them to live in substandard living, and it's concerning to me. So with a new project coming in, I would like to... I would have hoped to see something like that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, one question also. Are there like a little yard in the back or anything for them to have an animal, like a dog or something?
One thing that's unique about this particular product set is each of the individual units has a private, you know, backyard fenced area, and in general, each of the units has a backyard with a minimum of, you know, eight to 10 feet deep and approximately 10 to 20 feet in length. So the rental projects are really lived in much more similarly to a, you know, single family ownership subdivision product than a traditional multifamily rental unit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that's not shown on the elevation... On these preliminary elevations, but as you come in with the specific, more specific plan, they would show the gates on the elevations, correct?
Yes, each of the...
The fencing.
There is a gate into each of the backyard areas. That the backyard areas are generally maintained by the individual residents, but obviously, we, as the owner of the project, we take control of the balance of the community and maintain it to our standards, and to the extent that there are any required maintenance in the backyards, we have the right to, you know, maintain those areas and keep them updated as necessary as well.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I'm going to ask the most important question now that we've had all these other answers. We need to know the costs for the different-sized units. We really need to know at least ballpark figures for that.
Kind of projected rents?
Yes, please.
Okay. The projected rents on my pro forma for this project would probably be in the range of about $1,100 to $1,200 per month for a one-bedroom unit, $1,400 to $1,500 for a two-bedroom unit, and $1,800 to $2,000 per month for a three-bedroom unit.
It's always very difficult for me personally when we have zoning map changes, but I want to thank both our staff and I want to thank you for the... While that information wasn't in the packet, I was very pleased about how much information was in the packet.
You're very welcome.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Mr. Mayor, are they going to have washers and dryers?
Yes, all the units, washer and dryers are furnished.
Any of those type of things that we're not thinking to ask, just share with us.
Well, I think in terms of a general overview, we, you know, try and provide the units with typically our existing developments, either in the flight staff market or in Phoenix, have been developed with 10-foot-high ceilings, modern appliances, either granite or Corian, you know, countertop finishes. We feel that they're appointed extremely well. We've tried to, I think, provide an updated, fresh look to the exterior elevations, and again, as I mentioned earlier, typically where we can, either all or portions of the project are sometimes provided with gated access for security-related purposes, and we, of course, have general management control over the exteriors and all the landscaping so that the projects are maintained on an ongoing basis in kind of an integral fashion as an entire project rather than just maintaining one individual lot at a time.
Great, thank you. Counsel, ma'am.
What are you going to have for the children?
Well, we've got a small, little clubhouse area. We're planning to have a pool and spa amenity. We, you know, typically have, you know, kind of walk areas throughout the project. We look forward to kind of a dog park area, you know, a kind of barbecue area and kind of general amenity, sitting area off the pool area so that there's a place for residents to gather. And we, you know, through that, try and create a sense of community so that the residents get to know one another, and it's proven very effective in our existing projects.
Playground?
Pardon?
Playground?
We don't have a particular playground specifically planned for this area in this project. Primarily at the recommendation of our independent property managers, we've tried to focus on kind of the private backyard areas of each of the individual units since the people tend to live in it more like an individual subdivision as opposed to some of the playground areas associated with the multifamily, you know, the traditional multifamily apartments.
Anyone out in the audience have any comments, questions? This is the time to discuss.
A public hearing?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Richard, when does this come... When do we see the more detailed plan and all that, timing-wise?
Well, Mr. Burton has told me that he would like to submit something and have it in front of you by January. They have investors that apparently have a timeline that leads him to believe that he is needing to start construction by that time. That's a pretty quick turnaround. In terms of timing, there's every possibility we could get this thing to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review principally for the roadway communication and how that would work in December, and that would mean it would come to you, if not late December, the first part of January. That would be a best-case scenario. I am aware that they are working on engineering, the detailed engineering which becomes necessary to bring the final development plan forward, and there's a lot of problems with utility conflicts there to an including a fiber optic line, and they've been discovering problems trying to locate that from a national security standpoint.
Thank you.
Stay there, Richard. I forgot that I wanted to ask this, but I did remember. I noted one of the concerns for other residents and other owners are, as stated here, is they still need straight access off of 169 in regards to horse trailers through the development.
Yeah, I'd like to address that.
Are you comfortable we're going to solve that?
I believe so, and actually, Mr. Burton and I had that conversation immediately after the meeting, and you can see the main road that projects to the north, that would be a straight shot, and some of the adjoining property owners have expressed some support for blading a road directly to the north which would correspond to a future utility and roadway corridor so that they won't have to turn and go through the community but rather would go directly north to access their properties. And we're going to insist, of course, that the developer communicate with those folks before we entertain a final development plan.
Right, because we still respect and want to honor our rural residents and welcome new communities like this, but it's a tough... It's a tough situation to solve all those little problems.
Well, and if we go back to 2007 when we had a whole bunch of zoning activity, if we wouldn't have stumbled into the Great Recession, I would submit to you that the whistle-stop, the stuff further to the north, a property owner named Trion, which would be the intersection of Kachina and the highway, all of that would be have... Would have been developed, and I would also probably expect that a good portion of this property would have been developed commercially as well.
I totally agree.
Go ahead, ma'am.
So as you're designing this, I would like you to think a little bit more about families. When you said "small clubhouse," my ears perked up, and when you said "no play equipment for the kids," my ears perked up too. So I just want to impress on you to think about that because there's going to be some kiddos there if you have three bedrooms, and I'd love to see things in the clubhouse like study areas or computer labs or something like that. So I encourage you to think a little bit more about that, but otherwise, I think it's a great project.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you. With that being said, we're going to close. Comments from the public? We have any discussion as counsel before we move on to item C in reference this topic? Okay. Item C, consideration of reading ordinance number 868 by title only on two separate occasions, and then place the same on final passage approving zoning map change, ZMC 19-008, Cavan Opportunity Fund LLC. Go ahead and read.
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC 19-008, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately 19-acre parcel generally located at the northeast intersection of State Route 69 and 169 from C2PAD, Commercial General Sales and Service, Planned Area Development Zoning, to RSPAD, Residential and Services Planned Area Development Zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thanks, ma'am. Someone... We need a motion right now? No motion? First read. Thank you. Moving on, item 10. Staff, just so you know, on one of the directions on this page Vice Mayor just pointed out, it does show for a motion, so I'm just confirming that we are not asking for that right now. Okay? Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, sir. Moving on, item 10. Comments from the public. Not all at once. Looks like we're good. Can we get a motion for item 11, adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor and I?
Absolutely.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.